All right, ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with me? We'll have prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a chance to gather today to take care of county business, and we pray that that's exactly what you'll guide us to do today, that while it's a short agenda, it's nonetheless important, and we pray that we would give adequate consideration to each item. Thank you for those that are in attendance today. Thank you for the employees of the county. We pray, Father, that the decisions that this court makes are best for the interest of all concerned. We just pray for our community in the midst of the COVID-19 virus, that you continue to watch over us. We know that you're in control, and we just pray for a downturn instead of continued upturn. I pray all this in Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone to our second meeting of the month, May 22, 2020, 9:00 a.m., just after. We'll begin with item number one, our time for public comments, if any. Has anybody signed up for public comment time? This is your opportunity to discuss, make requests for information, ask questions about anything that's not on the agenda, as we do at each meeting. All right, we'll move on to item two, consider and possibly approve minutes from the May 11 meeting. That was our meeting almost two weeks ago, our first meeting of the month.
Make a motion we approve it.
Motion to approve the minutes is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of approval of that set of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Joyce, thank you for doing those. Item number three, report from commissioners regarding road work status. I'll start at the table if you're ready. Commissioner Fitch?
Okay. We had a lot of flood damage, rain damage in our culverts and such during the last heavy rain we had, so we had some ditch work we had to redo and some head walls and roads we worked on were the ditches in the bridge on 1240 and on 2340, worked on a culvert and a head wall, and on 1240. We did some ditches, were actually stuff washed all out in the road. We've been patching, of course, all over the precinct. We've had several sink holes that just hole up here there in the road and wash out that we've had to fix. One of them was on 2500 and one of them was on 1070, and we've been digging out soft spots or base failures on roads we're going to chip seal this summer. And we had several downed trees over the last couple of weeks we've had to clean up. We have been side cutting the sides of the roads out in the Monticello area, and we have moved over north of Highway 67 in the Winfield-Marshall Springs area, out that direction, mowing and shredding the right of ways. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
We have had a couple of culverts from the rain damage and whatnot, and they're older culverts, older tin horns. Got those replaced on 4265 and, no, 4365 and 4235, and been patching some, been side cutting and cleaning up trees still from the storms that we've had, and so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, I'm going to thank the Sheriff's Department for patching for us. They patched, we're on patches 3275, 3925, 3935, 3425, 3430, 3375, and we did a little work on 3241. And we're in the process right now of putting the millings that we get off 271, which is through now, on 1915 at Taupo. We're trying to fix that road. We've got half of it done. We've been putting in, put about 15 culverts the last couple of weeks, and we had one to fall in. We fixed yesterday, and a tree fell last Sunday, so it's a big one. But we just, just trying to get everything going. This water is just killing us.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddle?
We hauled rap the first three days, and Jimmy did, and I don't know where these other guys were, but anyway, then we've been preparing, changing culverts, ditches, and preparing for our seal coat. And we same problems in flooding and trees that everybody else did the last two weeks.
Who's got the first seal coat project for the summer? Anybody know yet?
Not yet.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. I'm not seeing the contractors with SWEP go out. I haven't seen one in a while. Are we able to closer to finding out what they're going to do for repairs?
As far as my precinct, they're pretty heavy operating out in precinct one because their yard is right off the interstate near White Oak Springs Church out off that South Service Road. So they've been running a lot of poles from Farmers Academy to Winfield and cutting through and crossing the interstate. So they have a, one of their last projects they're going to do is there's a substation at Farmers Academy, and they're going to put a super ginormous sized pole there, and it's going to require a lot of concrete, a big pole and sections and stuff they were telling me about. And he said that's probably going to be in about three weeks, and I don't know how much more if they're going to wind it down or what. So that's what I know for now. So as far as a few repairs, I may have them check into helping me do where their yard is and such. I want to make sure on that one road in Farmers Academy, they don't have to go down at about, probably about 500 yards from Farmers Academy, 899. So after that's finished, I might do get some work done out of them on a few repairs. So that's what I know.
Do they have a permit?
Huh?
Do they have to be a permit?
Uh, no, I didn't get a permit from, there's so many people, independent contractors bringing them stuff, but as far as their trucks, they're, they're the size, they're under weight where you don't have to have a permit. Just some of the big truck, the pole trucks that come in and out, they manage to go that yard out there, so they know that. I said, you don't have to get a permit for every company, just handle it, and he knows we'll handle it as far as in my precinct and such. So they're pretty easy to work with. I think we're going to be fine with them. Only have like one soft spot that started really getting bad since they've been hauling in and out, out here off the interstate. So everything else, they did a lot of work on Farmers Academy, and they didn't hurt a thing. In fact, they actually cleaned up the guard rail pretty good for me when they got done, so.
Have you ever seen several of those trucks on that avenue?
Yeah, well, some of the trucks are coming in just to get off that interstate and dump all that load. I don't even know where they're coming from. I mean, it's just somebody bringing a load, he's an independent contractor, he's gone, so. Did y'all, have y'all known if they turned one in for any, just general county? Does anybody know? I'll ask him. He may have filled one out, because now we do them individually. That project started probably before I came into office, and that's when they turned them in, they would come get them up here at the judge. So if he has turned one in, I'm not going to lie to you, but I'll see, and I'll update it and get a, get a permit turned in for him, it's no problem.
And do you guys keep track of some of that?
Uh, if somebody gets pulled over for any infraction or something, they may weigh them or something, but they have to go through the weigh station, you know, out here on the interstate. I mean, that's all they would keep up with.
Do you have to tell the lumber haulers or the lawnmower haulers who have to wait to see if they have a couple of those things?
Yeah, as far as those sections that they haul, I don't think they're overweight. They're just, you know, big trucks, so I'm not sure what section that would weigh.
Just to repeat the question was, for those that...
I'll check and see. I'm not going to lie, I say they didn't turn one in before I even came into office, so, because that yard's been out there a while, so let me check and see, and if not, I'll just get him fill one out, I carry them with me.
The original question for people watching that couldn't hear was related to SWEP code. Explain what that question was and why that's...
So they have contractors, American Power and something company, they're contracting these big metal poles all around the county, and so they have a yard out in precinct one that they haul in all their parts and everything on. So we just want to make sure they have a permit and that they will, we can get some reimbursement for road damages that they cause. So that's pretty easy to do because they're pretty easy to deal with, and they've done assure us, yes, we will take care of everything. As far as my precinct, I said, let's just wait till we get this last big project done, and then I'll know, let's fix this, fix this, and fix that, so.
Wish you be in good shape. Thank you.
I have, I have talked to SWEP Co. and to the contractors, and they, they're pretty much finished out in our area, but I have not talked to them since they have moved on out in Johns area and out, you've come through town and all. The project actually come from out in, down in Morris County, come through ours and through out here by the maintenance barn, and then it's going back out this other way. But I have, like I say, I have talked to the contractors and all, and we will be getting back with them.
Oh, I don't know, they've been there living on the switching station?
They didn't tell me how long they were going to be on that, Teresa. I don't, I don't really know.
But they're not finished, and they're starting over again.
Yeah, and that's the thing, I mean, you know.
Teresa, remember, you've got all these cell phone numbers here. If you have questions in the midst of the week, call any one of us if you have questions like this, and hopefully they can get answers. You know, they may not be able to answer everything today, but if you think of something, we post those numbers there so that you can reach any of us at any time. Item number four, consider and possibly approve payment to repair a windshield that was broken at the sheriff's office caused by a lawnmower owned by the sheriff's office in an amount not to exceed $250. Apparently this was some damage that was caused to, that was caused to one of our employees over there that was parked in an appropriate place. So for a brief summary of that, we've got Mr. Bragg here with us today. Come on up.
The damage we discussed about happened on May 4, 2020. It happened on May 4 of 2020. Lieutenant David Price had reported for work on the back parking lot of the sheriff's office. Later that morning around 11 o'clock, the inmate work crew went out to mow the yards on the sheriff's office grounds. During that time, the, one of the lawnmowers threw a rock through the back windshield of David Price, an employee there at the sheriff's office, and busted the back windshield on his Chevrolet Blazer. The, we reviewed the cameras on the grounds of the sheriff's office, and when he comes in for work, you can clearly see that his windshield is intact, there's no damage to it. When the mowing crew comes through, you can see they were pretty close to his vehicle when they were mowing. And then after the mowing crew came through, when Lieutenant Price was getting ready to leave for the day, observed that his windshield had been broken out. We also observed during that whole timeframe, his vehicle never left the parking lot from the time he got there that morning until he left that afternoon. So we were able to confirm that the damage did occur there on the Titus County Sheriff's parking lot. Did occur while the mowing crew was mowing. We've since changed the way they do mowing procedures to make sure that there's no vehicles in that parking lot when they're mowing, and if there is vehicles in there that they don't get over close to that, change the direction of where they're mowing so that they don't expel any rocks towards those vehicles.
These, the mowing crew are sheriff's employees as opposed to our contracted lawnmower companies?
Yes, sir. It's actually, it's, actually inmates, our trustee inmates that are able to do work outside of the jail facility that are in there for misdemeanor offenses, just like the same crew that we use to go out and fill potholes in the county on the, for the commissioners on their roads. We do, we use them for maintenance to cut our costs down there at the jail for all kinds of inmate labor there that we use them, and they do our mowing, weed eating, trash picking up, basically anything that we need there at the, on the grounds of the sheriff's office.
I'm not asking, the county, the taxpayers should pay their $250. Aren't we required to have insurance on our motor vehicle? And I assure you, the welcoming party at Brown's, they will tell you that it's a private property, and they will not take anything that's not $8, $12 or nothing, and then it's a part that was done to meet the Brown's property policy. Okay? I mean, I wonder about this. Man, it's only $250. I meant it's just to drop the bucket to the wages that are paid here in Titus County and stuff, but still, $150, I feel sort of, hell, a lot of insurance money, and I don't understand, okay, why the taxpayers are paying for this when that man should have had insurance himself, plus the county should have insurance.
County has insurance, and he has insurance also.
Uh huh. And what am I supposed to...
Well, there's, there's deductibles involved in insurance, and he was parked in a...
I'm fully aware of that after paying for what Brown's did to me.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? What's your pleasure?
It looks like we busted a guy's windshield out, which needs to replace it. If we bust anybody's windshield out, you know, with a lawnmower, we need to replace it, and it looks pretty justified. I mean, it's cut and dried, so sometimes people will claim, going down the road, you busted my windshield out. Well, that's a little different. This here's pretty easy to prove. I say, I make a motion, we pay it.
Motion to pay for the windshield, Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Appreciate you doing that. Item number five, discuss the installation of a glass barrier for the district clerk's office at a cost of $3,180 with possible action to follow. Marcus Carlock, our district clerk, is here to explain what he would like to do.
First off, I'd like to start off with our operational status, and as of May 4, our office has been open to the public, and we have procedures in place to minimize our contact with the public. Sorry, this mask is a little bit... About a month ago, I called three local glass companies to receive bids on a glass barrier and a glass door for our office. It is my understanding that we're one of the only customer service based offices in the county without security measures, and that's being a glass barrier or something to protect the employees from, from the outside public. Since I took office in January 2019, I've observed that this is a need and not a want. And now that COVID's came in place, it's almost a double need versus a want. Our office works with many volatile cases and people, including felony cases, divorces, child custody cases, and then frequently throughout my year and a half that I've been there, we've had children run behind the counters with parents chasing behind them. So I've contacted three local companies out of Mount Pleasant for bids. They all three came out, did measurements for it. We have two countertops, so I asked for a glass on each countertop with two speaker holes on each one of them, and then also a glass door with a lock on it. And out of those two companies, or three companies, we had two come back with bids. Brothers Glass provided an estimate for $3,180, followed by Brown's Glass for $5,895. The only difference between the two bids and Brown's Glass includes a, from what I understand, a digital keypad that's about a $500 addition. So with that $3,180, if I eventually want to get a digital keypad, I'll have to maybe use my office supply budget and get a keypad. Let's see. And I'm asking for this project to be paid for under the county's courthouse security fund, and this fund, from what I understand, is used for projects like this one that I'm asking for, and I believe that's, that's all I have.
How will that lock you back in there if you're working on the outside?
From what I understand right now with, with Brown's Glass, the $3,180, it's just the inside deadbolt, so I would have to keep that, you know, if we go in, you know, lock the door behind us, and eventually if I did get the digital keypad, I know that there's one in the old tax office where you have a, probably a nine or 10 digit code that you could punch in and just walk, walk in through the, behind the countertops. So our front doors are open, we just need some kind of barrier from the counter, on the counters, and also there's a wide open spot that we don't have a door. So we've had frequently kids run behind there, people that think that it's just an open area to walk behind, and that's just, from what I understand, we're the only customer service based office that, or one of them at least, doesn't have something like this.
How does your door, who puts on the inside? Is it a cratch bar or a cratch pad?
On the inside, you know, on the inside. It's been four years leaking out. You just push the door.
Is it like a paddle or something? You release it?
Yes.
Doesn't, don't you have a keypad?
We have a keypad on the outside.
And I know you probably have a lot more traffic going in and out of that, right? How much traffic going in and out through your doors do that place? Do you have, is that a seldom thing, or do you have a lot of traffic that goes through?
I mean, prior, prior to COVID, we had quite a bit of traffic, especially...
Under your normal operation, locking out the people that you don't want, but giving allowance to people who need to be coming back and forth through there. I'm here talking about operational simplicity, whether or not it's worth considering something besides having to have a key on the outside. And you said a deadbolt, I was thinking one deadbolt, which is probably a minimum, you want to unscrew if somebody can turn that thing from the inside?
I believe it's going to be, well, I believe it's going to be some kind of, you know, easily opening mechanism from the inside where they can lock it from the inside or unlock it.
Remember, every time the employees go out, they're going to have to go out, turn that through, lock it back with their key, go to the restroom, come back, pull out with their key.
And Brown's Glass included that one. Brothers Havre said that they didn't have the ability to do that, so we would have to contract out a locksmith to get that done, and he said it costs about 500, is what he estimated, four to 500. So on top of the $3,180, another four to 500. Now, Brown's Glass included everything, but their bid was $5,895.
I think you're on point about that.
The keypad. And that's something I can add right after. I mean, as soon as it's installed, I can call a, call a locksmith and get them to, you know, pay for it right out of our office supply budget, which I have plenty of funds left in it. I'm just asking for the lower end, that's much lower bid, that's 1,800, I don't know, there's $1,600 less than what, what Brown's is asking, and if I have to add another four or 500, it's still good, save another thousand or so.
I think you're on point about that. I don't think you'll be pleased without that keypad there, and I don't know of a better way to do it.
I mean, the only other way I can think of is just get it installed and then call, call a local locksmith to install one right away, so.
Not on plan that to get you, is that then requires a special arrow in the hand for the arrow or whatever.
And there's probably going to be a week's, a week's gap in between to where they have, where I call them and say it's been approved, and they have to order the materials to make all, to make this project happen, and during that time I can actually, actually get something like that accomplished, so. I'm asking for the main project to be paid out of the courthouse security fund, and then also have an office supply budget of my own that I can use to pay for the locksmith if I have to.
You're saying, I want you to use the security funds or everything?
I mean, we can, I'm just, that would be...
I would ask that y'all give them some allowance to do that, the keypad there. It's not going to be a practical. Any question you get done with 500?
I mean, I don't see why it would be anymore, but...
You can talk to Bobby Gooseberry when he installs with Brown's, but I think keypad coordination, I think all needs to be done, you have to go rather than have a backup.
Right.
I have a question on, you're such a disciplined saying in the Browns, are you sure both companies have their fire insurance, the county and their employees?
As far as insurance, I'm assuming that they're bonded.
Still, they're not going to tell them. I have one on the side of the universe. What's that insurance issue with that?
Make sure any questions.
This is something that my employees, even, even when I started, this was an issue as far as security, and this has been a worry that they've had, because a lot of times when we have felony docket call, we'll have up to 400 people that are under indictment come in for one docket roll call, and then we have those high volatile cases, divorce cases, where people are already amped up and, and upset, and we don't have, you know, a full-time bailiff for someone out front to check everybody in that comes in, and we're the, we're the only office that's open up front, so.
I think it's a good deal. I think we need to allow for the keypad put on there, take it all out of security fund. So I make a motion that we approve this, the Brothers plus the keypad, and check on
Second.
Are you sure that they are insured? I mean, I don't know what it's Martin to do, not to deal with somebody. I have to run business with them, very pleased when you set a project, but I think it's good that they're able to count it on, and you have some Martin back, and they can provide you with a liability insurance and...
Okay.
So the motion is to approve $3,180 with, with up to $500 additional to install the appropriate...
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Anybody second that on, is that, you have a second to make sure I have the line, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Would you like to come and cut out?
Yes, sir, I would.
All right, this is quarterly investment report, relatively new, but it's time to consider and possibly approve that March 3, first quarter of the calendar year ending investment report. Ms. Barbara?
You have in front of you the quarterly investment report. The documents that are in here are the list of certificates of deposit, the checking money market and other accounts by type of account, those are all at Guaranty Bank. Accounts at other institutions, we have some funds that are held by the bail bonds board that are at other institutions, but they are carried on the county's books. The list of pledged securities from Guaranty Bank, the pledge report from Guaranty Bank, that covers us in case, if the bank were to close for some terrible reason, we do have pledged securities. And then we also have a report, the safekeeping report, is where the securities are held. Those are held at Texas Independent Bank, and those numbers just confirm that Guaranty Bank does indeed have those funds set aside on our behalf. If you look at the reports, you'll see that we no longer have money in our checking, uh, wrong, no more, no longer have money in our certificates of deposit. Those funds were transferred to our checking accounts because the bank rate of interest that we earn is based on the T-bill rate, and that rate is significantly reduced. I'm sure y'all have seen that in the news. So we're getting a higher interest rate by having those funds in our checking accounts than in certificates of deposit.
Questions for Barbara about the investment report? All right, we need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve quarterly investment report, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second. Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item seven, approve our oral and written reports of county officials. You have that report in front of you.
Commissioner Parker, Commissioner Fitch, is that right?
It is.
You seconded. You were the first one. Okay.
Change of voice. Commissioner Applewhite, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of approval of the county reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Here's a document for you to sign that I'm gonna hand to you along with the treasurer's report. And that's number eight is our treasurer's report for your consideration. You've got a copy of that.
Make a motion we approve?
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Here's a document for you to sign that I'm gonna hand to you along with the treasurer's report. And that's number eight is our treasurer's report for your consideration. You've got a copy of that.
Make a motion we approve?
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I'm handing you three documents here. You've got your investment report, your treasurer's report, auditor's report there. Item number nine, approve budget amendments.
No amendments.
No budget amendments today. Item number 10, sign pay orders, approve payment of bills.
Make a motion we pay our bill.
Motion to pay made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments, if any. Just give you a brief, couple of things here, mostly related to COVID-19. DPS, Captain Scullin called me yesterday and said that they are ready to open up their offices June 3, I believe is the date that he gave me. Now, public needs to understand that most of what they will be doing will have to be online rather than showing up. And so, we talked about the operational difficulties of that. For those that are comfortable with using a computer, it should be a fairly seamless process. I have not been provided with that website yet. He's going to get me that information for where they go for driver's license-related items. They will be open by appointment for those, especially senior citizens that may not have access to computer or be comfortable with a computer. They will make other allowances for and find some way to assist them. So it will not be back to business as usual, but they will be back offering the typical DPS services by appointment only. So we'll be publicizing that information as we get it. As you've probably been watching and reading and listening, the number of COVID-19 cumulative cases is up very significantly in the last two weeks since we met here together two weeks ago. We are now up to 248 cases. We have had National Guard and Department of State Health Services here in town. This week, they began testing at three of our nursing homes where they tested patients and all staff there on Sunday and Monday. I believe that was Green Hill Villas, Focused Care, and Pleasant Springs. They will be continuing that process and even assisted living in the next couple of weeks is what I am told. Pilgrim's Pride was tested Tuesday and Wednesday. That was done on a voluntary basis. They were not able to force their employees to take that test. We had just shy of 1,200 tests that were conducted between those two days. We will probably not get results on that till sometime next week. They're just running behind, and they said realistically, seven to 10 days. My best estimate on how many people have recovered from COVID, I'm asked that question a lot, simply based on the passage of time, since they tested positive, my best estimate is about 20 recoveries. Unfortunately, we have had two deaths in the process. Both of these were males in their 50s. I don't know a lot of details on this. In fact, I don't know any details on the second reported death. I know that the first one was dealing with some pretty serious medical problems. And I know that the second one, according to a family member who told me that he was also dealing with significant medical problems. So you can continue to watch my Facebook page. The hospital is probably the best source for current, up-to-date information, and they are giving more information than they have been given in the past. You can see how many tests they have administered, how many positive tests have resulted through the hospital. Now, their number and the number that I'm reporting are going to be different because we have had some test results of Titus County residents that were positive, but the test was performed outside the county, probably predominantly at the Pittsburgh Hospital. So that's why you may get a difference there. They'll also report to you how many people are currently in the hospital. We were not giving that information out a week or so ago. As of yesterday, they had 14 patients in the hospital. Of course, that number can change from day to day, and I don't know whether they're in ICU or whether they're just on the COVID wing. I don't even know if they've all tested positive or not. There are some people that they believe are COVID patients that are in the hospital that they have not gotten results on. So there are other illnesses going around right now, specifically pneumonia, that could be the cause for their stay, but they're just reporting the number that, to the best of their knowledge, are I think that's the highlights of what I have to tell you. Commissioner Riddle?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the grant that we applied for, for the certs. It was certs the last time in 2014.
Sure.
And we didn't, let me, this is, I wish you'd reconsider using Allison Bass. We used them in 2014, and my personal experience is 1905 is a road where Green Hill Road ends and it goes to the, on the 71. I don't know who did it, somebody from Allison Bass or whoever that was handling the deal. We said, they said that road is an oilfield-related road. They were building platforms to consolidate three or four oil wells right at 71, County Road, I mean Farm Road. So anyway, I got 45,000 extra dollars for that little stretch of 1905 because those cement trucks, I complained, they were just, you know, night and day building the platform for those oil wells. And we got that money. Would have never known that if it hadn't been for the fooling with Allison Bass or Tac. And they've got a person signed to it. They have the means. They're all together with TexDOT, and they're right with them. And I think that would be wise to reconsider using them. And the cost is minimal, and the possibility of getting more money is, I think, a lot better. And the problem, the facts are, we'll never know if we left money on the table. If we don't, because those people, like when I called them looking for that particular form, it wouldn't print out on the thing. They said, "You're not, didn't sign the retainer. I notified you." But they didn't. And I think that, I think we would be wise to reconsider our position on that. I think that we could, and the cost is not that much. And I just think we should have the best chance we can get. We want to hire the best. And they're very familiar. As you remember, your position was on the bridge lawsuits and everything. They all worked together down at Austin. So I think that the possibility, and I'm not being critical, we could do it ourselves, and this is, but I don't want to do it myself. I'd like to have some help if I were doing it, because I just know from that experience, it's very possible that we could leave some money on the table that we'll never know about. So I would like to-
I'll be glad to give you my response on that. And what Commissioner Riddle is talking about is some grant monies that are available statewide, and the amount of money that's going to be given to each county is predetermined. We've been told how much that is. That's assuming that all counties claim their particular portion of that money. If some counties don't complete the paperwork and don't claim their portion of the money, it's possible that some additional monies would be allocated pro rata in addition to that fixed amount of some 157,000-
159,000.
159,000 dollars. So if I were to believe that utilizing Allison Bass, and he's talking about Allison Bass as the general counsel for Texas Association of Counties, we've used them. They represented us in the bridge lawsuit. They helped us with a CETRZ grant about five years or so ago, something similar to what we're doing now. However, it was a bit more complex than this one is. And if I had any reason to think that utilizing and paying this law firm to do this project for us could possibly produce more money for us, it would absolutely be well worth it. Commissioner, my understanding is hiring them is not a ticket or a promise or even any indication that they will get us more money. That's my true belief in the matter from the folks that I have talked to and that Commissioner Fitch has talked to. And while the fee would be minimal, probably less than $5,000, I don't feel that it's wise to spend $5,000 if it's not going to benefit us. If I thought there was a chance that it would, I would have encouraged y'all, yeah, consider using Allison Bass. Any comments to add to that?
Talking with TexDOT, they act like they have a pretty heavy turnout for this. So she said, maybe, she said at the most, you might get twice that 160 if somebody don't claim in the county. So we're proving the 160. It'd be pretty easy to prove. And we talked to her many times, making corrections, asking questions, did a webinar through WebX with them, and it's turning in our roadwork we're doing this year. This is for, this is for roadwork this year you can get done. So-
But it's specific roadwork, is it not? And it's specifically related to-
We choose, we're getting the money just because there's so much damage county-wide.
Damage from what? Damage from what?
Heavy oil and gas usage, and that's what we qualify for.
I mean, that's the whole purpose of this grant, is focused on that.
Yes. So so far, I've turned in four times that, like 650,000 worth of stuff's adding up so far. So it's just overkill. So we should max out that one.
And that's very similar to the CETRZ grant that we did five years ago. We requested or we listed road projects that were well in excess of what we thought we would get.
And that's what they recommended, so.
And we did get some more money, but it didn't have anything to do with efforts that were put forth by Allison Bass. It was that not all the counties had claimed their money. Why any county would not want to claim that money, I don't know. I don't think it's likely you're gonna double that figure. You'd have to have a lot of counties not participate.
We'd be super lucky if we doubled it.
Well, you're gonna have too, you're gonna have too many counties that are claiming this because they've made it easy this time in order to claim the money. And it's unlikely to me that there will be hardly anybody, certainly no county that's getting the kind of volume of dollars that we're getting, I don't believe is going to fail to do so. I could be wrong, but if we get-
It's justified. It's what work we're doing this summer on our roads, and they'll assign somebody out of Atlanta, TexDOT, to just come kind of finish it up like the bridge project, make sure, oh, yeah, that work got done. That'd be pretty easy, very easy to deal with, so.
Well, I probably, I don't, I don't agree with that at all. Where in the first place it says that we must have a detailed list of proposed repairs?
Mm-hmm.
Where did you get a report? You got, I made a part for precinct one. Did you make one out for precinct one or the other precincts, or did we make one?
They turned theirs in. You turned yours in late.
I got one too, but-
Yeah.
It's a county-wide application you're making for the, and so each precinct, so which one is, what's different? I mean, how can you determine that?
I can't determine. We just turn in that much money. We're gonna get $160,000 invited by four and flat to our budgets.
Now, wait a minute. Certs in 2014, out of 254 counties, that's where they base that 159,000 dollars that Titus County could get.
Yeah.
In 2014, 191 counties filed claims. Dallas or some of those counties don't have any county roads.
No, they don't have, they have less than what we do.
So we should get more than 191, not 254, how many counties in Texas? But anyway, that's it. But it goes on the list, these roads, the scope of work you're gonna do these roads, the length with the beginning and ending points of these roads, whether the work will be done by the county or contractors, and whether it anticipated start and ending dates of the project, the estimated cost of the prioritized list, that's it, will need to be entered in the forms available on TexDOT. I couldn't get that form, so I made up, I made up a form of my own. But anyway-
Yeah, I can update that for you.
We're just gonna handle all, you're gonna put down my precinct, what the things are?
Yeah, I've done all four precincts. Me and Barbara helped me, and we've talked to them several times. It's real simple, so we're gonna be good to go. It's gonna be good. I'm excited about it.
I don't agree with that. I think we should use them. But I make the motion, but we don't have a motion. I couldn't get it on the agenda. It was too late, I guess, but-
Who have you talked to and where to get your information?
You what now?
Who have you talked to and where, who was it that you talked to that gave you this information?
No, we got a letter in your-
No, but who did you actually talk to?
The guy down at, I believe his name was Neil at-
If you'll get me his name, I'll follow up with him.
Okay, well, here, you don't have to get his name. Right here, this email, we got a letter from Julia McVeigh, and she said, and so forth, it says, "Right now, and we still not be able to accommodate any return, any retainer that are not received in our office by May the 17th." And so, in other words-
So I turned that in and got that, so we're, we're-
We noticed that you didn't-
We've got all that going, so we're good.
Didn't hire the retainer, sign the form. It was in a package.
That's correct, and I've explained myself.
We didn't hire the lawyer. We didn't have to have a retainer. So we did it independent and saved the county money. We've saved them already $5,000 just with the basic. And if they double that or triple it, we'd save even more money. And it was real simple.
Don't get anybody's wholesale. We're not gonna double or triple that money.
Well, I hope, I hope-
We're gonna be happy with that 160, and maybe we'll get a few extra dollars, but it's not enough.
They're gonna give us a award letter by the end of June. So I'm waiting on that.
Ma'am?
Did y'all have, like, one of my county attorney requests to make sure that y'all have all the licenses that we need?
There's no legal basis about this. It's just a eight-question application, and I dealt with the woman that's head of the department that receives all that through TexDOT. So we talked to her several times. She's a super lady, and we're good to go.
It's not a complicated process. It's a matter of-
I have to honestly listen to you.
We're not gonna lose, she said we're guaranteed we're gonna get that 160. The cool thing about it is how they, if they will have any extra money to add to it, would be nice.
I have another question. I just said, you said you talked to Jim, to Parker and Applewhite. Why didn't you not talk to Jerry at this?
I did it here in the meeting, and I gave him the paperwork and everything. Turned out, he just turned it in, so we're good.
We discussed this two weeks ago.
So everything is, we're kosher with all the legal aspect, you know, and not losing it?
Yeah, we're good. I'm super stoked about it. And the lady in Austin is too. She's, we're good. So, pretty simple. Glad we done it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fitch. Closing comments?
Have none. Just be safe. Be careful.
Commissioner?
Only thing I've got is if anybody that hadn't watched Dr. DeLeese's deal yesterday on, I think Brian had it on his-
You talking about the video or his narrative?
His narrative that he had on there. I think it'd be good to watch and listen to. It's not just ourselves that we're trying to protect. I know everybody wants to protect theirself, but yet- I know we, everybody wants to protect theirself, but yet, uh, if you're out in public, you're, have got somebody else that you're involved with too. So, just, uh, watch or read over his narrative that he had, and, uh, I, I think it's a good deal, and I just pray daily.
That's Dr. DeLisi, who is, uh, his narrative you can find on the, I believe, the hospital's website and/or Facebook page. It's rather lengthy, but it's very good.
It's a good read, though.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion to adjourn is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.